Rosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coulter, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Ingracia, I mean Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Crewson, President Reed, here, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Howard, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman French, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Crewson, twenty-four present.
Quarant being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor Rodney Francis from Washington Tabernacle Missionary Baptist Church.
Let us, let us pray. Almighty God, as this Board of Community servants meets to conduct matters of city business, guide their hearts and their minds. Without question, there are many complex issues before them, and they are of diverse opinions. Yet we pray that the ethics of love, justice, equity, and fairness will guide their deliberations so that the differences will result in mutual successful conclusions. Sharpen their intellects to think creatively about solutions to the challenges of the day, and deepen their compassion towards their constituents, in particular, the least among us, our children, our seniors, the poor, the parentless, and the homeless. O God, as they work for the peace and prosperity of the city, gird each of them with a sense of personal integrity and protect their hearts against the subtle lure of hubris and avarice. Grant them and their families your peace and your favor, so that even during the most difficult and challenging moments, they may take heart and find the courage to do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly with you. Amen.
Before you be seated, we will have some special words of reflection surrounding the tragedy in Orlando, and those words will be led by Reverend Katie Hots Wilton of Metropolitan Community Churches.
Well, good morning. My name is Reverend Katie Hots Wilton, and I am grateful to be with you here today. In the aftermath of a hate-fueled assault on the LGBT community in Orlando, I am honored to stand here as a lesbian, a wife, a mother, a Christian, and a pastor. I serve the Metropolitan Community Church of Greater St. Louis, which many of you know as MCC. We are located just down the street here in Soulard. Our church was the first Christian denomination to welcome and fully include lesbians, gays, bisexuals, and transgender people, and the first to perform gay weddings, beginning even back in nineteen sixty-nine. Until last weekend, the largest assault on LGBT life was the arson of the upstairs lounge in New Orleans in nineteen seventy-three, which took the life of twelve MCC members, including their pastor, along with twenty others. Today, today is a day for tears, and sadness, and fury, and righteous indignation, and weeping for the queer community, for the Latinx community, for the Black community, for the trans community, for the Muslim community, who will all be demonized for the actions of this one lone gunman, and for the Christian community who have allowed hate to be disguised as gospel. I am here today to tell you that hate is not gospel. This violence is not an isolated incident, for I am reminded that today marks the one year anniversary of a deadly massacre of nine African-American churchgoers who welcomed their murderer into their midst for a Bible study at Emmanuel African-American Episcopal Church in Charleston, South Carolina. Yet we call that assault something other than terrorism. The violence has got to stop. The world is watching and needs us to help them know how to respond. While we grieve and work to wrap our arms around the incredible loss that the Orlando community is feeling, it is important that we not forget the many intersections of events that make up these issues that we face. This event is not separate from the events of Ferguson a year and a half ago. It is not separate from the string of hate crimes in Dallas, and the potential shooter making his way to the Los Angeles Pride celebrations. It is not separate from the San Bernardino terrorists or the hateful rhetoric directed at all Muslims, and above all, it is not separate from the religious condemnation of gay people that led a shooter to be filled with so much hatred that violence to himself and others seemed the only redemption. Hate, violence, and disrespect for life is only overcome by love, peace, and respect. That should be our prayer and our practice. In the words of my colleague and friend Reverend Tracy Blackman, "We have two choices. We can ban all assault weapons and limit access to guns, or we can stop saturating our soil from the highest halls of government to the poorest rural communities with racist, sexist, heterosexual, classist, xenophobic hatred." The choice is ours. Our work for unity, justice, and equality must prevail. We must stand together across the lines of religion and political parties. We must stand up and show love. On Sunday night, the city of St. Louis showed up. With just a few hours' notice, more than two thousand people gathered in the Grove, and we marched down Vandevent to the transgender memorial garden. It was there that we cried together, we prayed together, we lit candles, and we held vigil together. In that moment, we stood side by side. We were one community with one voice. We needed that. I would invite us now to a moment of silence to honor those lives that have tragically been taken at that Pulse nightclub in Orlando. May St. Louis continue to show compassion to the LGBT community. We also lift up the lives of people of color in our city. You know every need. Remind us, urge us to rise up, to speak up for all those who have been pushed to the margins. Gracious God, I pray for the Board of Aldermen as they gather to do this work. May they be reminded every time that they gather of the sacredness of every life. Give them the courage to bring about necessary change that might bring new life and renewal. And more than anything, we are grateful that you know us and you love us. In your many names, O God, we pray. Amen. Thank you.
That was beautiful. Let's give a round of applause to both the pastors here today for those inspiring words. We will spend with our regular order of business, take up our cursed resolution calendar. I move for adoption our cursed resolution calendar, and take second on that motion. Seconded by the Alderman from the third. Alderman from the twentieth, would you like to approach the dais?
Actually, we're waiting for Duchess to show up. That's why I was trying to answer the phone call. Her mother was calling me, and so she's on her way in, and she's a little bit lost.
Alderman Davis? Alderman Davis, could you please come to the dais? We're waiting on the mother to show up, so we'll hold on that one for a minute until the mother shows up. Alderman Davis, would you like to approach the dais on your resolutions?
All right. Good morning. This morning, we have the opportunity to recognize two entities that provide the opportunity, most especially for young people, to explore, have different chances to have dreams, interact in spaces that they would have never been in in any other circumstance. So what I'd like to do first is to recognize the Metro Theater Company, and I would like to ask the representatives for Metro Theater to come up first, if they would join me here. We've just mourned the loss of Muhammad Ali. He was a very gracious man who had many, many, many opportunities to, and I say it my way, to put us right in this country in what we do and how we do it. I had an opportunity to share an experience to tell his story as a young man, how he got started in boxing, how he met a police officer who challenged him to be even more than he dreamed that he could be, and who stood by his side and also guided him on his early path into boxing. St. Louis had the privilege of interacting with a playwright who had written the story, Cassius Clay. But one of the things that we didn't know was how important that play was. And I never say all of everything, so I'm gonna say it right, and in this corner, Cassius Clay. We know that he had many struggles, but what our young people didn't know, as they hear us honor him and saw all the things, how we talked about him, is how he started. He started like any other average, young, African-American male in any given urban city. So everybody thinks it's magical when you get to that point where you're famous, but there are many struggles on the way. So when we looked at this play, and we had the opportunity, Mr. Godwin, who wrote it, and the star of the play, Mr. Morgan, they did a great job in his honor. But the better job was done by the city of St. Louis and the Metro Theater Company. The production of the play was superb. For those of you all who didn't see it, I hope we have an opportunity to produce it again. The citizens of this town, the corporate community, private or large, small, all donated. Seventy-five hundred children in this region had an opportunity to see the play. That is amazing. That doesn't normally happen in this town. So I had to do something, not only to recognize Muhammad Ali, but to also recognize the Metro Theater Company. And I just shared with them this morning that this resolution, along with the playbill, the poster, and all memorabilia associated to this play will be taken to the Muhammad Ali Center in Louisville, Kentucky, and it's up to their discretion on how they will display it. But St. Louis will show that we cared and we respected him. So in honor of that, I will not read the resolution. You have the opportunity to read that yourself. We have a long day, but one thing I want to say is, this one sentence regarding Muhammad, "He graced the squared circle and our great nation with extraordinary talent. So too he fought injustice, he stood up for his convictions, and he was willing to sacrifice his own freedom for his beliefs." I pray that we all do the same, and I want to welcome you and thank you for your work. Okay?
Thank you so much. It has meant so much to us to produce this play, and we had no idea, of course, at the time, how timely it would be. The young people who joined us on this journey were an inspiration to all of us, including the young boxers at St. Louis All City Youth Foundation, which is a boxing club in Fox Park that helped us and helped the actors. We hope that Muhammad Ali's impact will continue to touch all the lives in our city and the world. And I wanted to share just one moment of an email we got this week from a parent who said, because of this play with the passing of Muhammad Ali, she didn't need to explain to her nine- and eleven-year-olds why the country was in mourning. They understood who he was and why it meant so much to all of us, the work that he did and the life he led, and the inspiration he has left for all of us. Thank you so much to the city of St. Louis for this.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Also want to just thank you on behalf of residents and people who cannot be here to thank you personally themselves today, continue doing the great work you're doing throughout your community. I had the pleasure of growing up under Muhammad Ali when it was free to just turn on the TV and watch a boxing match, and I was pay-per-view, but he was a true giant, and so thank you for that nice tribute to him.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. He wants to take a picture. Very quickly, I also want to recognize some individuals who are here to support the Salute to Women's Gala tonight. You know I've been talking about it for about six weeks now. You know that we have produced this, I think this is our fifteenth year. We honor women who have achieved at a high level and who also dedicate themselves to the community as well. We are blessed to have people who believe in what we're doing. They take out of their busy days to come and be with us. So I'd like to ask Mary Wilson of the Supremes, Melba Moore, Richard Gant, and Mrs. Anom Clayton to please come up to the dais, please. You're so gorgeous. I'd like you all to stand on each side of me, please. All right, come, there you are. Mr. Gant can stand behind us, okay? There's no reason to say a whole lot, because you know who they are. When you talk about the Supremes, that's all you have to say. There's nothing else to say. We are blessed that we are going to be honoring Mary Wilson tonight as a lifetime achiever. As you know, she has been in the industry for a long time, and she is great. Oh, we don't have to say how many years. It's a long time, and we have all enjoyed it. And then Melba Moore, of course, has been so, so inspirational, because you see, that's another story that needs to be told in its entirety, how she got into the business, how she moved around in different parts of it. So you know, when you can be a songstress, you can be an actor, and you can also do Broadway, that's pretty good. So I am very, very happy to have you standing next to me. It is just wonderful. And then, of course, I'm going to ask that Ms. Clayton, because you know, you don't have the opportunity every day to be in the midst of the right hand of Dr. Martin Luther King. This was the right hand. This woman was the right hand. So you don't get that opportunity. And then you don't get an opportunity for someone who knew Muhammad Ali like you knew Muhammad Ali. So I'm going to ask her to take about a minute, because we got a lot to do, to give us some words of encouragement because of the times that we are in with the disruption of brutal murders, with the passing of Muhammad Ali, and how we should be formatting ourselves to carry on the dream of Martin Luther King. So first, I'd like to honor Ms. Mary Wilson with a resolution from the city of St. Louis. Okay? And of course, honor Melba Moore with a resolution from the city of St. Louis. And I know my friends standing behind me, Richard Gant, think I forgot about him, but I didn't, because you know, you have seen him on many TV shows. He's usually the head of the police department being tough, or he's the general with the Army Brigade that's being tough. Here lately, he kind of quieted down a little bit. I know you played the dad on one of the series, this, one of the new series, and so he's, but he's busy all the time. But he takes his time to come here and support us in St. Louis, and he will be announcing the women as they are being honored tonight. Thank you. All right. All right. This is Clayton.
Thank you very much. I had the extreme honor of being with you last year, and I'm again honored and pleased to be here today. As you look at this chandelier, you know there's some light, but that's not what gives us the light, not the chandelier. It's the electricity, the connection that gives us light. We have to have grounding, connection, association, to bring us together, to illuminate our minds and our thinking, to make the decisions that you have been charged to make. Dr. King often said, "When men," and that was his language at the time, but he certainly meant men and women, "of wisdom and logic would come together at the table of reasoning, the results therefrom would be unimaginable." Think about that, the connection that comes from below and gives the illumination through a light bulb that gives us the intellect and the ability to make decisions that affect us. Our world has gone in a wild direction, but I feel like there's never a thing called the point of no return. We can come back to reasoning. We can come back to love. We can look at the life and the celebration of a life like Muhammad Ali. When you think of Muhammad Ali's funeral, as I sat there and watched all the details, my mind went back to Martin Luther King Jr.'s death and his funeral, which I helped to arrange, and I remember those moments so vividly. And what came to my thinking then that those men live lives that make us want to remember them and celebrate them. Here it is almost fifty years after the death of Martin Luther King Jr. that we're still celebrating his life. And I had to ask myself the question, and I imagine you did too, as you looked at that funeral and asked, what would people say about me? Well, you who sit here in these sacred halls will help to shape what we'll do for you in the future. The kind of lives you're living through, the decisions you make, the kind of love you expend, the kind of light you will shine, will give us the rationale and the reason to celebrate your life. But we're all in it together. If we all love, how much better our environment would be. If we all came together and sat at these tables with logic and love and reasoning in our hearts, what difference the decisions would make? I'm honored to respect you who are sitting in these hallowed grounds. I marvel at your ability to do what you've been charged to do, and as we remember the world and look at it, how dastardly those acts are, that we can make a difference from this point forward. Thank you for this moment and join the celebration tonight. Thank you.
I'm hot. I got some stuff over here, bud. I want the people from, come, come, I need you all to come get in the picture. Come get in the picture. Quickly. Just walk around and come get in the picture. Come now, right by here.
Maurice Hope, a couple more coming.
Maurice Hope, a couple more coming.
Did you recognize my friend's name?
Alderman from the 20th, like to approach the dais.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We've been sitting here today talking quite about, a bit about love, and we are also here to recognize the love between some, quite a few number of strangers before us. And I'd like to invite the members of the fire department, our St. Louis City Parks, and the families of two young girls, Niaja Thurman and Ms. Duchess Brand, and your families to come on up to the dais. St. Louis City has some of the finest parks in the entire world, and we have a phenomenal gym on the south side. We call it, it's market, known as Marquette Park. It's two full city blocks. It has the largest free public pool on the south side, in the entire city, rather. And it's a phenomenal asset. We are so lucky in the City of St. Louis to have free public pools. Not every city has them. We put a lot of resources into them in the City of St. Louis. And as you know, a member of this body, myself, worked very hard to get the Marquette Pool reopened last year, and for that reason, I felt that it was prudent that this body recognize the actions of some young heroes and some older heroes before us in an incident that took place at the Marquette Pool just last week. And so, Mr. President, if you don't mind, can we introduce the resolution? Okay, so I'd like to read the resolution. You all might have seen on the news that we had an incident last week wherein one of our citizens, a young girl, almost drowned in our pool. And so before us, we have resolution to recognize Ms. Niaja Thurman, who assisted in that incident, and Ms. Duchess Brand, who was a surviving hero in that incident. So whereas, if you don't mind, I'll read it. Whereas, Marquette Pool in the Dutch Town neighborhood is the largest of three public pools in the City of St. Louis, a respite from our sweltering summers, city summers, as we are experiencing right here now, an activity for our city's youth, and a free amenity vitally important to the overall health of our community. Whereas, on June 7th, 2016, both Ms. Niaja Thurman and Ms. Duchess Brand were enjoying the pool when Ms. Brand became compromised in the water, and it was Ms. Thurman who came to her rescue immediately, assisting her out of the water and calling for help. Whereas, Park Ranger Kennard, hearing the call here today before us, Mr. Kennard, Ranger Kennard, our park rangers are vitally important to keeping our citizens safe. He acted swiftly and immediately, calling 911 while lifeguards came to her aid. And our lifeguards are phenomenal. Their leader, Ms. Dana Foster, is also here onstage. The St. Louis City Fire Department personnel arrived on scene within three minutes. That is really phenomenal. Three minutes and their swift and reliable action was necessary in the medical assistance of Ms. Brand. Whereas, Ms. Mary Grace went above and beyond as her nurse, ensuring the health and wellness of Ms. Brand and assisting her through a full recovery. It is right that we celebrate the heroic actions of all involved in saving the precious life of Ms. Brand. Ms. Brand, would you stand forward for us? Ms. Duchess Brand? If you don't want to, sweetheart, you don't have to. She has really been a hero. And it was Ms. Thurman here, Ms. Niaja Thurman before us, who really, really came to her aid. And, Mr. President, if you don't mind, explain just how important this resolution is. You do such a wonderful job of that. Oh, actually, before we do that, I do want to, I do want to read the names of the emergency responders who were so quick and who are here today. Captain Demetrius Panopoulos, Mr. Fire, of the Fire Department, and Michael Wolford, Michael Barnes, and Morris the Grand. We also had a medic unit who transported Ms. Duchess so quickly, Andrew Suda and LaCole McKinney. So if we could get a round of applause for them. Oh, sure, okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
I tell you, these stories, this is just amazing. You know, a father of four, for me, thinking about it and thinking about how wonderful a story we have in front of us now because of everyone involved, I am, I'm moved. I'm moved and just touched by being able to be up here today. This resolution is the highest honor the board has to give any organization or individual. It's more than just a piece of paper. What it does, it cements in time some of the person's many contributions up until this point. So that 100, 200 years from now, when you research the records of the City of St. Louis, you will be able to read about this incident in the records of the City of St. Louis and read about how a life was saved and everyone that came to the rescue. And this is a great day in the city. It talks about the heritage of the city and what this city means and how people take care of each other in the City of St. Louis. And I am so pleased and honored, especially when you see young people do great things in the city. You hear about the bad things, but this is a great thing. So congratulations. Job well done. Let's give them one more big round of applause. And I think you all are gonna have to wait a minute. A lot of people have, wanna comment. Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, first I'd like to say that this is touching for me because in the last few weeks, we've had really sad news concerning children. First, we had the incident with the child falling into the gorilla cage, and the child was saved, but we had to kill the gorilla. Then we just had the incident in Florida with a child being dragged by an alligator, and unfortunately, that child was not saved. So to hear this at a time when we're hearing such bad news, shootings, and things like this, you do need to hear this. And to see that another child was willing to do what she needed to do and to know what to do to try to help another child is just endearing. That's about doing the right thing. That's about having a child who is prepared to do the right thing. That's about parents who have taught them that that's their responsibility to look out for others. So not only do I want to congratulate the child that's helped, but I want to congratulate the parents who have raised them to be that kind of person, that they would put themselves out there to try to save someone. And I want to thank all the first responders because you are very important, and we take you for granted sometimes. And I always tell people, you really don't know how much you need a fireman until you have a fire at your house. Then you understand it, you know? We take it for granted. We think that you sit up in those firehouses, but all you gotta do is have a fire at your house and need the fireman and then, or the first responder, the EMT, and then you understand how important it is. So I think it is wonderful that, that this was a happy ending. I would also ask if the Alderman would mind if we would pass this in bank? And I'd like to move that we, is it appropriate?
Yes, yes. Alderman from the first moves that we pass this in bank, seconded by the aldermen from the 9th to 13th to 23rd. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. What that means, what that means to everyone here is that this resolution now will be amended, adding every single alderman to it, right? I know you probably heard about the Board of Aldermen, and a lot of times, people go back and forth, and they're not in agreement, especially firefighters have heard that before, right? But on this issue, every single alderman wants their name added to this resolution. So it will be amended, adding every single person's name to it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman from the 23rd.
I would like to congratulate and thank all the people that came and rescued this young girl. What goes through my mind is, to the young lady that actually saved her, that's a Godsend. You're an angel from God. From the young lady that was saved, you must have a greater purpose in life for God to want you here, and I think through your life, that'll, that'll, that'll come out. Anyway, I just want to say, God bless. Thank everybody that cooperated in saving this young girl's life. And like I said, I believe God has a greater purpose for her.
Alderman from the second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I too remember the story on the news, and Ms. Thurman doing her interview and telling things that went on. And apparently Duchess is a, and her family are residents of the Second Ward. So we, I was pulling for you and praying for you when I saw Alderman Spencer's tweet that she had done well and had recovered fully. I was totally joyful. I have my son here that's four years old. I don't know what I would do without him, and it just was a wonderful story. So a hero to you, a hero to our first responders all the time, and our Parks Department and our park ranger also that responded. Everybody did a great job in that particular situation. I'm so glad the outcome was as positive as it was.
Now we will hear from the mother, Clarissa Gordy.
I just want to say, thank you, Jehovah, first and foremost, because without him, my baby wouldn't be here. I want to say, thank you to Niaja because if she didn't pour my baby out there with her, my baby would be dead right now. So my heart goes out to you, and I thank you so much, and I thank everybody for all their love and support and their prayers for my baby. All the first responders that came through for her, me and her, and her baby sister Shanell, really appreciate that. So from my heart to yours, I just want to say thank you.
And now we'll hear from the father, Dewan.
Hi, my name is Dewan Brand. I'm Duchess's father. First, I would like to recognize God works over a miracle. So I thank the Lord because I believe if it wasn't for Him, then none of this would have been possible. So again, thank the Lord Jesus. Second, I would like to thank, I would like to take the time to thank Niaja, a brave, a brave young lady, for just doing this rug thing for my child. You are a hero. Remember that. Take that to heart. And I would also like to, I would like to just give recognition to everyone else involved, such as the paramedics, the lifeguards, Fire Department, Coroner Glenn and staff. I thank you so much for your kindness, your care, your heart, and your eagerness to get my, my baby back home with our family. Last but not least, I would like to thank my Buddha, my hero, Duchess Brand. She truly is amazing and one hell of a fighter. And I am proud of her. I love you Duchess. Just to the parents, teachers, friends, family, associate, babysitters, caregivers, please understand the dangers of not knowing how to swim. Because just knowing kids' limitations, you have to keep close eye on them, and it only takes a few minutes to drown. So I'm just advising people, if your kids don't know how to swim, please sign up your children for swimming, because it's crucial for them to know how to swim. I wouldn't never believe that, that this would have ever happened to one of my children. Because as a parent, it was hard seeing my child suffer, suffer like that, you know, experience a near-death, just having a near-death experience. I was hurt, though. I was hurt, but I didn't believe the Lord was ready to take my child. So I prayed to our heavenly Father, let Him know that I have faith and I believe in Him. I cried out to Him. I also reached out to my family and my friends for prayer and support. I thank God for everyone who sent their kadosis. So, so hear me out, please pay attention to your awareness, attend to your surroundings, be knowledgeable about swimming pools, parks, and centers. Because as a loving and a caring parent, it is important that we all are capable of taking care of our children. So do research and utilize your resources. Remember, it takes a village to raise a child. With that being said, we really need to be more secure with our children and be in a safe environment. Please make sure you praise the Lord every day, know your God, have faith in Him and in your heart. In conclusion, I appreciate those who took the time to listen to me and all those who are watching. Thank you, and have a great day.
I know if anyone from the Fire Department or any paramedics, any of you all wanna, or the park ranger, any of you all wanna step up and say anything? Chief, you want to say something on behalf of?
Good morning. First off, I'd like to thank you all for taking the time to recognize a hero in our midst. I'm gonna take a little bit of I-time. I spent eight, about eight years working at Marquette Pool. A lot of children pass through there every day. They do a fantastic job and provide an unbelievable service for the kids of the City of St. Louis. You don't see this too often. The composure that she had to grab a child, hold her head up, and ask for assistance. I know it doesn't seem like a lot, it was a lot. I mean, it gave me goosebumps when I heard the story as it was coming in. So she did a fantastic thing. So, thank you very much. As for the firefighters and EMS service and the park rangers, this is one of those things we train for. Everybody hears about CPR. We hear about how we respond, you know, the response times, everybody falling into place and doing their job. The system worked. Three-minute response times. We got there, the park rangers and the lifeguards were working on a little girl. The system works. She was into an ambulance, sent to the hospital in grave condition. The system worked. We do it every day. We enjoy doing it every day, and we're very good at it. And we're good at it because you allow us to be good at it. So thank you.
Park ranger? Would you like, uh, park ranger that, is it, I think he's, I wanna just close by saying this. We're gonna prepare a copy of this resolution for each and every one of you. If you would like a copy, just let the sponsor know, and she'll get a copy made for each and every one of you. And then we'll have it amended also to reflect some of the things of today. But thanks again to our young hero who keeps saying, she doesn't want to say anything, but maybe one more round of applause and get her up here to just say something. No, mother? Yeah? Let me take the paper.
Hello, my name is Terry Waller. I am the mother of Niaja Thurman, who helped Ms. Duchess Brand out. I would just like to say that I- I would just like to say that I am grateful, my God, that she's home, safe, and sound. That was our main focus. We did a lot of praying. I'm glad that my daughter did leave after I told her not to, but it was God that sent her. And I would just like to thank my daughter and thanks for, my daughter being able to see her and yeah, um, I'm just thankful. I'm kind of lost for words. I'm thankful and I'm glad that she's okay. That's the main thing we were worried about.
We're going to have everyone line up over here for a photo. Thanks again to our firefighters, EMS personnel. As you said, Alderwoman, you never know until you need them. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. And when you need them, you're so glad that they're here, there. And we have a great fire department and EMS team. All in favor signify by saying aye. They're out fighting on behalf of the citizens of the city of St. Louis each and every day. Oppose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of the in-bank on the, on the last resolution.
So noted.
Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the twenty-third.
Members of the boards, I'd like to have as my special guest today Percy Green III, who's with Fire, and Al, who's with Firefighters Local Seventy-three.
Alderman from the thirteenth.
As President, members of the board, I would like to have as my honored guest, my oldest and dearest friend Kathy Banker.
Alderman from the eighth.
Morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Today, we have a friend of mine, former state representative Judy Baker, who's running for state treasurer. Many of you know her. She's from Boone County and she's with us this morning.
Welcome Judy. Welcome. Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to announce today my honored guest, the former comptroller, Veris Jones, and a resident of the twenty-sixth ward. Thank you.
Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today, one of my neighbors down in Soulard, longtime Director of Human Services in the city of St. Louis, and the Chairman of the Seniors Counts Campaign, Bill Seedorf.
Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have for my honored guest today, Martina Johnson, St. Louis Association of Realtors. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce Laura Griffin, who is here. She lives at the printers lofts. Thank you.
Welcome Laura. Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to have as my special guest today Anthony Lancia, who's with the AGC, and Kelly Ryan, who's a student at Washington University studying political science.
Any further, Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest, no other than Mr. Chris Pickle and Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? We also have with us Mr. Gary Noble, a former NFL player and director of Fathers, Fathers, Director of Fathers Be Fathers, Inc., with John Dieter's also. Please stand. Heard a little bit about his program. It's a great program. Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're here on June seventeenth, which is National Eat Your Vegetables Day, so hope everyone's doing that. More importantly, and how appropriately, on this day in nineteen sixty-four, since we had Mary Wilson here, the Supremes released their first number-one hit, Where Did Our Love Go? How's that? And I wish the fire department was still here so we could rescue us from Dave Sweeney's coat. Thank you.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of the June third minutes.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, entertain the second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the third. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes.
We would dispense with line items, line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Alderman from the nineteenth.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to move, uh...
Sixty-four.
Board bill sixty-four off the informal calendar to the perfection consent calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Add board bill number sixty-four to the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you.
There was an objection. Alderman from the sixth.
The board bill being moved onto the perfection consent calendar.
Madam Clerk, please place board bill number sixty-four on the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Anyone like to move any further bills off of any of our informal calendars? We would dispense with line item nine and ten, first reading board bills.
Board bill number eighty-six, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Seven Twenty-One Victor Street and Twenty-four Oh Three through Fifteen South Seventh Street. Board bill eighty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Casillasco Industrial Site One. Board bill eighty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Carter, in ordinance requiring that request for traffic calming as defined herein and related traffic complaints received by the city be managed in accordance with the central process to be called the City of St. Louis' Traffic Calming Policy, granting the, the Director of Streets the authority to develop and promulgate the city traffic calming policy, subject to Board of Public Service approval, containing an emergency clause. Board bill eighty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, in ordinance to amend ordinance Seven Oh Two Eight Five by removing section twenty-nine, providing an effective date and including an emergency clause. Board bill number ninety, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro, in ordinance establishing a three-way stop site at the intersection of Marquette and Prather by regulating all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Marquette at Prather and regulating all northbound traffic traveling on Prather at Marquette and containing an emergency clause. Board bill ninety-one, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on the North-South Alley in City Block Eight Forty, bounded by Barton, Seventh Street, Victor, and Ninth Street. Board bill ninety-two, sponsored by Alderwoman Murphy, in an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on the North-South Alley in City Block Fifty-Three Thirty-Four to the East-West Alley in City Block Fifty-Three Thirty-Four and bounded by Terrace, Christie, Grabois, and Dahlia. Board bill number ninety-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimates and Apportionment, authorizing the execution of a parcel development agreement by and among the City of St. Louis North Side Regeneration and St. Louis Grocery, Grocery Real Estate, prescribing the form and details of said parcel development agreement, authorizing certain actions by the city officials, and containing a severability clause. Board bill ninety-four, sponsored by Alderwoman Barron, during the ordinance establishing a four-way stop site at the intersection of Walsh and Clifton by regulating all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Walsh at Clifton and regulating all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Clifton at Walsh and containing an emergency clause. Board bill ninety-five, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus, in ordinance prohibiting the issuance, installation of any new pole signs, any sandwich signs, limiting signage to one sign attached to the building and establishing a closing time of seven PM for all businesses located on King's Highway, Memorial Boulevard, containing an exception and a, and containing an emergency clause. Board bill ninety-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus, in ordinance amending ordinance Seven Oh Two Three Eight, directing the Director of Streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic at Wabba-Dah, seventy-five feet east of the West Curb Line of Union and containing an emergency clause. Board bill ninety-seven, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus, in ordinance amending ordinance Seven Oh Two Two Four, directing the Director of Streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise, oh, to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic at Terry at the West Curb Line of King's Highway, Memorial Boulevard and containing an emergency clause. Board bill ninety-eight, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, in ordinance pertaining to the miscellaneous fees or surcharges imposed by city courts, amending section two of ordinance Five Six Seven Seven, Five Six Seven Eight Seven of the Revised Code of the City by providing for assessment for a dollar, a four-dollar fee, for a four-dollar fee imposed by the city courts for payment of court costs by means other than cash or negotiable instrument in order to cover the transaction costs imposed by credit card companies or other payment providers and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
To, to the Ways and Means Committee, board bills ninety-three and ninety-eight, to the Housing Committee, board bills eighty-six, to the Neighborhood Development Committee, board bill eighty-seven, to the Public Employees Committee, board bill eighty-nine, and to the Streets Committee, board bills eighty-eight, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, and ninety-seven. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following board bill, we'll report out the Ways and Means Committee, board bill one as amended, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Conway, the budget for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen through two, through two thousand and seventeen, and containing an emergency clause. Board bill sixty-eight, sponsored by Alderwoman Krusten and Alderman Williamson, in ordinance approving a petition for the creation of the East Loop Community Improvement District and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our second reading.
We're dispensing line items fourteen and fifteen. Board bills for perfection.
Board bill sixty-four, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, in ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on Seventeenth Street to Washington to St. Charles Street.
Alderman from the nineteenth, you recognize on the perfection of board bill number nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to perfect board bill number sixty-four.
Been moved by Alderman, Alderman from the nineteenth, that we perfect board bill number sixty-four, entertain the second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the thirteenth. Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to give a little bit of clarity very quickly to board bill number sixty-four. And I will be very brief. I know it's warm today. This is a fifty-one million dollar project that currently, the building is vacant. It is been sitting vacant for a number of years now. The developer has a strong track record for his progress and understanding of what is required to bring in something that is useful to a community. Has a very nice project in Kansas City that we can look at. This particular project will have a hundred and sixty-eight total units, a hundred and twelve single bedroom units, one bedroom units with approximately a thousand square feet to it. There will be thirty-two two-bedroom units, four per floor, with about fourteen hundred square feet in each unit. There'll be twenty-four studio units, three per floor, with about eight hundred square feet in each unit. The first floor will have an early childcare center. It will have an enrollment of about two hundred students. There will be ten jobs early, uh, let me, ten part-time jobs there at about fifteen thousand, I mean fifteen dollars an hour. And then there will be forty full-time employees, and their pay will range between thirty-five and fifty-five thousand. The roof will have a pool, cabana, and lounge. The adjoining building will have a playground, and there will be parking and a dog park. They'll be using some state and federal historic tax credits, and the project is only seeking tax abatement, not a TIF, no SID, and no TDD. The street vacation that is required in order to make this project whole has some nuances to it. The street vacation is necessary to provide secure parking for students for the school, which will be from ages six weeks to five years old, parents, teachers, residents, employees, and guests of the building. The section of Seventeenth Street being vacated is only a hundred and fifty feet long. The vacated section will be converted to ADA parking and green space with the dog park. Will also, the developer is committed to pay for and has received preliminary approval from the Street Department for changing Sixteenth Street between St. Charles and Washington from a one-way to a two-way street to help traffic flow for all area residents. We do appreciate the residents' concerns, but this is a very large project, which we will only benefit the entire neighborhood and downtown, and help further connect downtown and downtown west. I also wanted to read to you all of the items that will be done, because there was some concern, and I always try to make sure that if there are specific concerns, they are addressed. My last conversation with the President of the Association for the Printers Loft Building was yesterday morning. I also received another email that indicated to me that there was no consideration for any kind of adjustments from the residents. The only thing they wanted was to leave Seventeenth Street open. I've had a meeting with them in person. I've talked to a number of them on the phone, and I've tried to give some other suggestions on things that could be done to accommodate closing Seventeenth Street. So after all of that, and they said that there's no reason to talk to them anymore because the only thing they want is Seventeenth Street open. So I have ended those conversations. And I moved on to make sure that those things that had come through emails were addressed, most specifically the ADA request. So I did meet with the Street Department, Board of Public Service, the developer's representative, and the contractor. So here are the results from that meeting, which the developer has agreed to pay for. So we'll provide new sidewalk on the north side of St. Charles between Sixteenth Street and Seventeenth Street. We'll provide new sidewalks on north side of St. Charles from Seventeenth Street to the west to a location past the existing loading dock where it can be tied into existing sidewalk towards Eighteenth Street. And mind you, there was, there is no sidewalks there now, so this will be a new addition. Eighteenth Street in St. Charles provide new ADA compliant curb ramps to cross St. Charles east and west ends, as well as to cross Eighteenth Street on the south side. Sixteenth Street and St. Charles provide new ADA compliant curb ramps to cross St. Charles on the west end, as well as to cross Sixteenth Street on the north side. Sixteenth Street in Washington provide new ADA compliant curb ramps to cross Sixteenth Street on the south side and on Washington on the west side. And please note that the existing curb ramps on the northwest quadrant of the intersection can be used as they are. They're in very good shape and they're compliant. So Seventeenth Street and St. Charles will provide new ADA compliant curb ramps to cross Seventeenth Street on the... because the only thing they want is 17th Street open. So I have ended those conversations, and I moved on to make sure that those things that had come through emails were addressed, most specifically the ADA request. So I did meet with the Street Department, Board of Public Service, the developer's representative, and the contractor. So here are the results from that meeting, which the developer has agreed to pay for. So we'll provide new sidewalk on the north side of St. Charles between 16th Street and 17th Street. We'll provide new sidewalks on north side of St. Charles from 17th Street to the west to a location past the existing loading dock where it can be tied into existing sidewalk towards 18th Street. And mind you, there was, there is no sidewalks there now, so this will be a new addition. 18th Street in St. Charles provide new ADA compliant curb ramps to cross St. Charles east and west ends, as well as to cross 18th Street on the south side. 16th Street and St. Charles provide new ADA compliant curb ramps to cross St. Charles on the west end, as well as to cross 16th Street on the north side. 16th Street in Washington provide new ADA compliant curb ramps to cross 16th Street on the south side and on Washington on the west side. And please note that the existing curb ramps on the northwest quadrant of the intersection can be used as they are. They're in very good shape, and they're compliant. So 17th Street and St. Charles will provide new ADA compliant curb ramps to cross 17th Street on the south side. 17th Street and Washington maintain sidewalk system for east-west pedestrians on the south side of that intersection, so you still have the opportunity for pedestrian thoroughfare. 16th Street between St. Charles and Washington provide two 10-feet travel lanes, which now makes that two-way instead of one-way, and a seven-and-a-half-foot parking lane, so that you'll have that parking over there, because I do know that whenever that space in that building is rented on the first floor for retail, they do need that parking there. So that will be maintained. And then a sidewalk greater than or equal to five foot with clear passage and maintain the relocating of existing lights, which is four, and all of that will be paid for by the developer. So as we move forward in looking at this, this is just where we are today, and you know I will continue to look at this, I will continue to explore any other additional things that could be done to also make this even better. The developer is more than willing to comply, and that is a plus for us. As I move forward on this project, I would like to say that we, on a regular basis, close streets in order to provide economic development, and we can start downtown, go from the ballpark and go all the way out to Skinker de Bolivar. It is not unusual, this will not be the last time. We have a large city with a large footprint that is almost 50% empty at this point. We have to be creative in our opportunities to provide development. We will change grid patterns, we will change transportation patterns, we will be doing many things in the future in order to give us a city that has all the things that we need and for those residents, and preferably attract new residents. There is nothing that we should not be trying to do in order to do that. If we continue to lose population, the problem and practices that we have today will continue and only get worse. I'm looking at making sure that this city not only grows economically, but it grows with residents, and we want to have quality living and quality experiences. So yes, I am sorry, I heard everything. It will require the people in the Printers Loft Building, when they go out of their back door, to walk an additional 180 feet. I'm sorry, but I shall move forward on the development. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 6th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a moment to make sure that we were having a conversation that puts the residents and businesses wishes of downtown first. I don't think I've been contacted by more people on any issue than I have on this particular one, and being that I represent a part of downtown, I feel like I need to make sure I'm advocating for those residents. I've received emails, had telephone conversations with and meetings with building owners, property managers, residents, the disability community, none of whom think this is a smart way to move forward. I think it's a dangerous precedent that we allow developers to tell us to give up an amenity that we have, it's an asset that the city owns, we're giving it away for free, and while it may increase the safety for the small amount of people who are living in this development, it decreases the safety for the whole. I've never spoken to the fire department or the police department and had them be supportive of a street closure like this. I think we need to keep the integrity of the grid, and I am calling for a better process with respect to how we decide streets get closed. We have a planning commission, we have the St. Louis Development Corporation, we have a number of entities who are experts in this area, who should be advising us as aldermen how to move forward, and we should not be allowing private developers to tell us how to move forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, I voted for this bill in committee. I'm probably gonna vote for it again, but if the Alderman from the 19th, I went because I start getting so much. If she would yield, I would like to ask her a few questions.
Alderman.
You don't want to answer? It's not adversarial, I'm just trying to get something straight that was sent to me. You don't want to?
Alderman.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further, Alderman from the 5th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would just like to rise in support of this bill. I will say that oftentimes, it's not easy to get a $50 million development in downtown west. We heard the concerns of the residents, we worked tirelessly with the developer to address some of those concerns. They were in a position where they wanted to allocate in excess of $200,000 to make sure that the traffic moves slowly through their area. We heard the residents, but unfortunately, it was a situation where they weren't willing to compromise, and sometimes when you're a leader, you have to make hard decisions. I've been making them since I've been down here, and I just want the residents to know that we definitely heard their concerns, and you know, we want to move forward, and we're just trying to do what's in the best interest of downtown. We definitely have some concerns, we have a crime problem that's through the roof, so when you have a developer that's coming in to invest $50 million, we're trying to increase residents, we've been losing population downtown, it's just something that you have to consider with deep thought, and we met with the residents, we tried to work with them, but I think, you know, it just came to a point where if the street wasn't going to remain open, then they were willing to sacrifice the entire project, and as a leader, that's something that I can deal with at night, because I know what my purpose is, and my purpose is to create growth in our city, and I just ask for you all's favorable support. I know they've been sending a lot of emails, and I would ask that you trust that the aldermen that represent this area are moving in the best interest of the community. I mean, I wouldn't ever rise up to try to tell any of my colleagues what's best for the people in their community, and it's my hope that we can just move forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 19th, you recognize the close.
Mr. President, members of the board, I renew my motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we perfect Board Bill Number 64. There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Flowers.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Coulter.
Aye.
Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Ortman.
Aye.
Alderman Vollmer.
Aye.
Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Was that an "I"?
Yes.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Yes.
Alderman French.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderman Cruzen.
That was a "no".
Yeah, she voted "no".
President Reed. Alderman Tyus.
Tyus.
Alderman Coulter. Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Ortman.
Yeah.
Alderman Ortman. Alderman Vollmer. Alderman Vollmer.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz. Alderman Howard. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. 16 "aye" votes, 5 "no" votes, 3 "present".
By your vote, you stand the motion, Alderman from the 19th, and perfected Board Bill Number 64.
That's the extent of Board Bill for perfection.
Madam Clerk, there's been a request by the sponsor that we move Board Bill Number 30 as amended to the, yeah, third reading in regular calendar, and then there's also been a request by the sponsor of Board Bill Number 41. Alderman, you want me to just move it to the informal? Go ahead, Alderman from the 11th, I didn't know you were standing.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask that Board Bill 41 be put on our informal calendar, please.
Madam Clerk, please move Board Bill 41 as amended to third reading in the formal calendar.
So noted.
And Board Bill Number 30 as amended to the regular third reading calendar.
So noted.
Third reading consent.
We have none.
Third reading report of engrossance.
Board Bill 55 floor sub sponsored by, floor substitute sponsored by Alderman Bosley and Alderman Carter, and ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission making appropriation for payment of the operating expenses, capital equipment and improvement expenses, including lease purchase agreements involving the Parking Division assets and debt service expenses of the Parking Division of the Treasurer's Office, Keel and City Hall, Information Technologies Office, Argyle Parking, Shoto Parking, Williams Pickford Parking, Central Downtown Parking, Buckingham Parking, Couples and Justice Parking for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016 and ending June 30, 2017, amounting in the aggregate to the sum of $16,679,750 and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from 27th, you recognize on the third reading, final passage of Board Bill Number 55, floor substitute.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I move that we third read and finally pass this bill, Board Bill 55.
Moved by Alderman from 27th, seconded, seconded by Alderman from the 1st. Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 55 for substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Flowers.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Ingracia.
Aye.
Alderman Coulter.
Aye.
Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Ortman.
Aye.
Alderman Vollmer.
Aye.
Alderman Villa.
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Behringer.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman French.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaccaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
Alderman Cruzen.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Moore. Alderman Conway.
Aye.
Alderman Vollmer.
Aye.
Alderman Howard. 25 "aye" votes.
By your vote, you stand the motion, Alderman from the 20, excuse me, Alderman from 27th and third read and finally pass Board Bill Number 55, floor substitute.
Board Bill 57 as amended, sponsored by Alderman and Alderman and President Reed. President Reed, Vaccaro, Howard, Vollmer, Conway, Murphy, and Carter, and ordinance calling and providing for the holding of an election on November 8, 2016, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors a proposal to levy and collect a property tax of five cents per each $100 of assessed valuation for the purpose of providing services to persons aged 60 or older.
All right. Before we begin, we also have Cheryl Walker with us today. Stand, let's give her a round of applause for that. Alderman, please proceed.
I would ask that we third read and final pass Board Bill 57 as amended.
It's been moved by Alderman from 23rd, entertain the second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the 6th. Alderman, please proceed.
I would just renew my motion.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 11th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alderman, the 23rd, you're handling this this week?
Yes.
Okay.
Gonna do my best.
Congratulations. Are we sure that, I'm on line 5, when we call for a property tax, are we sure that's only on real estate?
I don't have a.
Would you like Alderman from 23rd to yield for question?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, and I'm so used to talking to myself, I forgot to address it to someone else. I would like to inquire of the Alderman from the 23rd.
Alderman from the 23rd, will you yield for question until Alderman from the 11th?
No.
Alderman from the 11th, please proceed.
Alderman, on line 5 of the board bill, we're levying a tax, we're gonna collect a property tax of five cents. Are we sure that only applies to real estate and not personal property?
I would believe yes, because it says property tax, it doesn't say personal property tax, and I think the intent is only on property, not personal property.
Okay. Now, if you flip back a page or two to Section 6, "Upon the approval of the tax by the qualified electors of the City of St. Louis, a tax so approved shall be imposed upon all taxable property within the City of St. Louis." So you're assuring me that that does not apply to my five cars?
To the best of my knowledge, yes. I think the intent is on property, not personal property. And I would believe that if it gets way out there, it's gonna go to the voters, and if it gets way out there, they won't approve it. I think it's gonna be a struggle enough to improve a property tax increase, but I believe it gives $2 million to support senior services, which is well-needed. Again, we're gonna ask the taxpayers to look at this and to vote on it, and I think the wording on the ballot should and would more or less assure that it's that, and I know that's the intent of it.
Well, I, this is my opinion, I mean, I think it's ambiguous at best, all taxable property within the city, and we currently, you're paying taxes on your fancy SUV, right? Isn't that taxable property?
It is.
Would you lead to believe then, if you read line 18 of Section 6, that that's gonna be taxed, an additional nickel?
I know it's not the intent of this. I, you know, I mean, is it possible? I guess it's possible, but I know it's not the intent of it.
And Alderman, I have no intention of taking little wrath I have left out on you. I understand, but we're raising, you know, this is a tax proposal, we did this with outfiring many shots. No one from the Department of Human Services has talked to me and said, "Well, this is how we're gonna spend this money, where is this money gonna go? We're creating yet another board, and sure, we're gonna have approval of their budget and a partridge in a pear tree," but has anybody talked to you about this? I mean, we're writing, we're writing laws here.
Right. Well, I would, I would offer that, at this point, you can always still make a floor substitute to it, and I would, I would.
No, gentlemen, we're on third reading.
Oh, you know what you're right.
I can't do anything but talk to myself here.
I apologize, and I would, I would.
That's all right.
That would have been done prior to this, because it's been in committee, and you're right, it's been perfected, so during all that process, it's been amended, although it's, I'm handling it, you know, I wasn't obviously through the whole thing, and there's questions that were not, I would have hoped that would have been brought up during all the process, that it's made it this far without those changes, and I think the appropriate time to have made those changes might have been in committee or last, you know, last week when it was being perfected. And I, and I think the appropriate time to make those changes might have been in committee or last, you know, last week when it was being perfected. I know you have perfect attendance.
Are you telling me that my interrogation is untimely?
Possibly. What I'm saying is, is
Well, I possibly disagree, Alderman.
I know, but there was plenty of opportunity to make changes to this. And at this point, you know, I'm asking that we, we pass it, give the voters the opportunity to either vote this up or down based off of how they feel.
Okay, thank you. Mr. President, to just speak briefly against this, and it's very difficult to be against seniors, I have a bunch of them. I am one of them. Fortunately, I'll be, I'll be turning sixty soon. But, but this is certainly, I think, vague at best. And we are criticized for coming down here week after week after week, not being able to come up with any type of funding for more policemen. And I think the number one reason, when you go to neighborhood meetings, what people are talking about, certainly in my end of town, is, is crime. So what we're doing here is we're adding to a, I don't know which tax, depending on how you read this, it might be the real estate tax, and it might be personal property tax, at which point, you're talking about considerably more money. Having said that, we're giving it to a board who in turn is gonna turn it over to social service agencies, I think, to help people that are sixty. And I, I just don't think it's, it's drawn nearly tightly enough, and, and I'm sure that the Senior Citizen Service Fund, I mean, are they gonna need staff? I, I don't know if they're gonna need staff, but "The budget may allocate funds for operational and capital needs to senior-related programs in the City of St. Louis." I, I just don't think there are very many reins on this, and we did in fact, and certainly I helped, we have raised our taxes a whole bunch this year already. So we're gonna have more than culture shock next Thanksgiving when our real estate and personal property tax bills come through, primarily because of what we did for the public school system, which we had let fester for the greater part of more than a decade. So I just respectfully don't think this is a good idea at this particular time, and I certainly wish someone from the Department of Human Services or, or my guardian angel, or the people that email me about an alley that I don't know where it is, I wish they'd talk to me about this one. Thank you, Mr. President.
I need to address
Thank, thank you. Alderman from the Twenty-third?
It was told me that
Alderman from Twenty-third, you, you address me.
I'd like to address his
Okay, if you, you, you address this issue to me, or if you would like him to yield, you can ask him to
Well, to yield, I'm just gonna address his question.
Okay, go ahead.
It was whispered in my ear, it is all property, including cars and property tax, that it does include all. So I, so I was, I'll stand corrected on that. It is all taxes, personal property as well as property. So, and so I was uninformed, but that is factual. And then the other thing I was gonna address is, on the Moore police, we have funded over a hundred police every year for the last two years that haven't been filled. So I mean, the funding's there for the Moore police, it just hasn't been filled. But I did wanna correct, 'cause I was wrong in my assumption, that you are right, it is including my fine new SUV out on the lot, and your five Rolls Royces that
Well, one's a Bentley, gentlemen, get that straight.
I did wanna correct myself, so, and, and so I stand corrected.
Mr. President, may I seek, have recognition again, please?
Yes, please.
Yeah, that, that just exacerbates a bad situation. You know, keep in mind that now we're going to raise all our tangible property. And, and I, and again, I, I think that, you know, there's never a bad time to help seniors, but, you know, some of these taxes and the levies are getting to a breaking point, and I think one of the attractions of city living was a relatively low tax rate as it relates to certainly real estate. And, and with this, no one really came up with very good numbers. I inquired last week as to what it was gonna raise, and the Alderman from the Eighth, in his defense, didn't think he was gonna handle the bill either, but, but just, in my humble opinion, and that's all it is, there are too many unanswered questions, and I plan to vote no. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman from Twenty-fifth.
Words of clarification on this bill. The language in our Board Bill might seem roughly vague, but it also references the state statute that passed, and the state statute specifically does list property taxes, it does not include real estate taxes. St. Louis County is, you know, also working on this, and they've only done property tax. So the amount of money that would be collected from the, the personal property tax rolls would be about two million dollars annually from this. That commission would then allocate funds through Health and Human Services, primarily for nutrition and transportation for seniors in our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion, any further? Alderman from the Twenty-second, we'll be right back. Alderman from the Twenty-second?
Yes, Mr. President, with the Alderman from the Twenty-fifth, yield.
Alderman from the Twenty-fifth, will you yield to the Alderman to the Twenty, from the Twenty-second? Alderman from the Twenty-second, please proceed.
Thank you, Alderman, for maybe shedding some light on some clarity. So what you're saying is the state statute reads exactly the way the Board Bill reads, right?
No, the state statute enables us to pass this Board Bill, but the state statute clearly specifically says in it that this is for personal property tax. It does not include real estate taxes in the language of the state statute. The state statute is referenced in the Board Bill at the beginning of it, but this does not, this emulates what we're supposed to do as part of the enabling legislation, to send it out to the voters to pass it.
So this is personal property tax, not real estate tax?
It's a personal property tax.
That wasn't my understanding, I thought it was, originally, I thought we were taxing real estate.
In the, in the state statute, it says property tax, which is the language they use for personal property, not real estate tax, it's a, it's a property tax.
It says property, not personal property tax, it says property tax. But to the Alderman of the eleventh Ward point, personal property is property tax, right? And real estate tax is property tax, right?
Jeffrey, the language they use in Jefferson City generally says real estate tax or property tax, property tax referring to the personal property tax, real estate being a real estate tax.
Well, let me ask you this, based on the way the state statute is written, could it be open to either or?
I would say that a lot of laws could be open to either or, which is why we have attorneys that fight these out in court quite frequently.
Could we say in this Board Bill excluding personal property tax? And still be in compliance with state statute?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Could we say excluding personal property tax and be still in compliance with the state statute?
I don't think so, but I'm not an attorney.
Okay, so we should find an attorney, 'cause I am concerned about that language. Thank you.
Alderman from the eleventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. It really isn't a corporal work of mercy to confuse the elderly. The Alderman of the Twenty-third told me it did in fact apply to both, and now the Alderman of the Twenty-fifth told me it doesn't. Anybody wanna chime in? Mr. President, you know, if you read this, and that's all I'm, you know, my limited ability can do, "The tax so approved shall be imposed upon all taxable property within the City of St. Louis." I don't think there's any court in the land that wouldn't rule that if your car is taxable property, and our cars are, that this tax is gonna apply to that. This, I don't know who the powers that be addressed on this, our, our Budget Director, who I inquired of as recently as this morning, had not been contacted, so, I don't know, it, it would be a shame to send something to the voters, and we don't even know what we're asking them to tax. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I rise in support of the point made by the Alderman from the eleventh. He is one of the people who has served in many positions, not only as the President of the Board, a member of the Board, but also at the State Legislature. One of the things I know as a lawyer is that the courts, when interpreting ambiguous language, go to the plain meaning of what that means. And the plain meaning is that it's all tax, all personal, all property taxes. And that's not a good thing. We should not be passing things that are not ambiguous. I understand that we want, that are, I'm sorry, that are ambiguous. I understand that we wanna get this thing passed, and we have a date, but I really suggest that we could clean this language up pretty easy by putting this back on the perfection calendar, and even if we gotta come back in here, which I don't love doing, I think that it would be worth to come back in here and to have this thing done right, and to be certain than to pass things and then have lawsuits. You know, recently, we passed a minimum wage bill, then one judge said, "That's not legal." We passed laws about stadiums. Years ago, we walked a petition that everybody, including me, who signed it, knew what they were signing, and a judge said, "Oh, they didn't know what they were signing." I think we do ourselves a disservice at this Board of Aldermen, we're supposed to be making laws, and we're not the only one that loosely uses terms. The State Legislature does that, too. And I think that, when I read their term, we copied their wording, but their wording is ambiguous, and I would ask you, as the primary sponsor and the Alderman from the Twenty-third, if they would really, if you guys would really consider sending this back to perfection and cleaning this up, and then we, and doing that, and if you don't wanna do that, I am forced to vote present.
Alderwoman, I, I think that, I think you raise a good point, and I think we, yes.
We will consider moving it, we'll move
First, you have to, if we're gonna change it, we need to move it to the perfection.
Well, first, let's put it on third read in formal calendar, and then we can get a legal opinion between now and next week, and we will know if we have to
Thank you.
make a change.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill Number Fifty-seven as, you, you wanna do it? Please place Board Bill Number Fifty-seven as amended from the third reading to the third reading in formal calendar.
So noted. Board Bill Thirty as amended, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, and on is pertaining to vendors on the wharf, repealing ordinance six-one-three-six-two, and enacting a new ordinance establishing the process of soliciting vendors for said area, establishing a wharf vending district, and establishing a riverfront vending district committee.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move to third read and final pass Board Bill Thirty as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the seventh, seconded by the Alderman from the ninth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number Thirty as amended. Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board Bill Thirty as amended would be a repeal and replacement of the wharf vending district. For those of you who are not familiar, the wharf vending district currently is the area on the one-point-five miles on Lenore K. Sullivan, between Shoto on the south and Biddle on the north. It is the area that recently underwent a nearly three-year, I think close to forty-five million dollar, don't quote me on that number, it might be closer to forty million-dollar renovation, raising the level of the road to prevent less flooding, or to have less flooding on the riverfront, and it is part of the overall City Arch River project. This bill would repeal the existing vending district on the wharf and replace it, same boundaries, but with a committee that would approve the permits for vending permits on the, on the riverfront. And this committee would be comprised of the Executive Director of Great Rivers Greenway. Great Rivers Greenway contributed through the, the property tax that they operate under, contributed a lot of money towards this project, and will be managing the riverfront for various festivals and events. So the Executive Director of Great Rivers Greenway, an appointee chosen by the Executive Director of the Great Rivers Greenway, the Director of the Streets Department, who's currently involved in the permitting process for vending districts, the Port Authority Manager, who's also currently involved in approving permits under this vending, under the old vending district, and finally, the Special Events Coordinator, who also is currently involved in approving these permits. So this committee would review the applications, and their, their other job is to hopefully help us find more entertainment and more opportunities for vending on the riverfront. As part of the overall renovation, we've added a lot of power and a lot more ability to have quality vendors on the riverfront in the hopes to activate that space. Just this past weekend was the first major event on the, on the newly redeveloped riverfront. It was the Brewers Guild's Heritage Beer Festival. About ten thousand people showed up for that. It was a huge success. There's some kinks to still work out, not everything's perfect, it was the first event down there, but we're working on those. Ultimately, I think this is a good bill. The committee that we're putting together will require the consent of this board, that's something that I fought for to get, make sure we had in, in place. So, you know, they will have to come here for, be nominated by the mayor and approved by this board. So with that, I'd ask your favorable consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the Boards, I am a proponent of having managed vending. So I'm not a fan of vending every place, so I was at the committee when the Alderman from the seventh introduced the bill, and I made this point, and I'll make it again. I think he kinda understood me, we've talked since then, I think he understood me a little better. I like what they're doing, but sometimes when you're sitting at the table, you don't know that you're excluding other people, okay? 'Cause you're at that table, and you're saying, "We're doing a great job." And they are, I like the things about, they're gonna have vendors who pay, I think it's a thousand dollars for a year or something thereabout, and they will build their own vending venue that will, has to be approved. But what, the point I was making, and I still make, is that there are some, if we're gonna have vending, I want it to be fair and accessible to those who maybe don't have that kind of thing, and not just accessible doing garage sales or some kind of festivals. So what I wanted to see, and I still hope that they will listen to what, why I can't support this, is that I would love to see the authority down there build
Have some water, please.
Okay, I would like them to build something that could be used for people who are more transient, say if you're selling African art, and you can't, you're not gonna be down there forever, and you're not at a festival, but that way we could have inclusive, people that are inclusive that don't have that thousand dollars, and you could rent that out for a week, a month, or something like that, and that would be the ones that they would own. I understand that the big people would build their own, but I think we also have to, as a person who spent a lot of time down there when I was, and the Alderman from the Twenty-fifth didn't know this term, courting my husband, that means dating, okay? When I used that term in transportation, he laughed at me, and I dated myself, but when I was dating my husband, and we were in school, law school and graduate school, we went there a lot of times and just sat, and it was a free place to go, and then they had the McDonald's boat and other things that were more family-friendly. And although a thousand dollars may not seem like a lot to big corporations or big people, sometimes when you're trying to do this, you don't have a thousand dollars to put up front to pay for that to be, and I just really believe that if, with just a little tweaking, and if they could just, they got the money, build a site that people who don't have that kind of money could be inclusive in, and I think that that would make all the difference in inclusive, being inclusive, and that's why I'm not going to vote for it, not because I'm opposed to all the great things they did, I think they missed the boat with being inclusive.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the seventh, you recognize the close?
Thank you, Mr. President, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh, and seconded by Alderman from the ninth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill Number Thirty as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Coulter, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldt, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderwoman Cone, Alderwoman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Moore, Alderman Conway, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Arnoldt, Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Rhodey. Twenty-two, I vote to, no votes.
By your vote, staying the motion, Alderman from the seventh, third read and finally pass Board Bill Number Thirty as amended.
That's the extent of third reading report of engrossment.
Report of enrollment committee.
Board Bill Thirty as amended and Fifty-Five floor substitute.
All other business being suspended, the President shall, in open session, have fixed his signature here to, to the end, that these may become law. Dispense with line items twenty-one and twenty-two. Miss Lane, it's unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
The full board meeting will go into a closed session under provisions of Sections six-one-zero-point-zero-two-one of the Missouri Revised Statutes in order to permit the members to discuss personnel matters.
Alderman from the eighteenth, Mr. Alderman from the eighteenth here. Alderman from the twenty-seventh, you would like to make the motion?
No, no, I wouldn't make it.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you'd like to make the motion to go into closed session? Yeah, we are when we come back, yeah. Would you like to make the motion to go into closed session?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board goes into closed session.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, seconded by Alderwoman from the nineteenth. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. So I'm going to ask everyone who is not a member of the board to please exit the chambers. I'm asking the City TV Ten folks to, or STL TV, I'm dating myself, to turn off the mics and the cameras while we go into closed session.